It is six thirty. If you would join and stand and join me, stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Dreyer, if you would call the roll?
Mayor Park.
Here.
Mr. Sins.
Here.
Mr. Terry.
Here.
Mr. Daly.
Here.
Ms. Ferguson.
Here.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Rocker.
Here.
And if there are no amendments or additions and corrections to tonight's council meeting agenda, the agenda stands as read. Is there a motion to approve the council meeting minutes from April tenth?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Daly.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Rocker.
Yes.
Thank you. On this evening's agenda, we have a proclamation for Arbor Day. And to give some background to everybody that is attending the meeting this evening and for council, it is asked to present a proclamation to announce Arbor Day. We are trying to become a Tree City USA community, and one of the items is to present this proclamation. Friday, April twenty eighth at one P M., we will be having an Arbor Day celebration at the park. So please, if you're able to attend, we would love to have everybody come out and join us at that one o'clock time for the ceremony. Also, this evening on the agenda, you will see that we are appointing tree commission members, and that is another item that we need to have in effect to be able to obtain Tree City USA status. So with that, I will read the proclamation. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and world, including the village of Plain City. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing their erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting, heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our village increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the village of Plain City seeks to celebrate Arbor Day by planting a variety of beneficial tree species at Pastime Park. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jody Kern, the mayor of Plain City, do hereby proclaim that the twenty-eighth day of April two thousand twenty-three is Arbor Day within the village of Plain City. Thank you so much for presenting this, and thank you to our Parks and Rec Department for helping to organize this ceremony. With that, we have a couple visitors. First, Mr. Joe Luby. If you would like to, do you want to present here, or are you going to save time during, or did you just sign in? Did you want to speak to council?
I'm here for organizing the agenda.
Okay, yes, thank you, all right. And then, so we have Tamisha Mattis with Creating Healthy Communities Coordinator for Union County Health Department, if you'd like to present.
I'm really shy, so hopefully. So I've had some of you, I've been with Union County Health Department since COVID. I do active living and healthy eating for the county. When I first started, one of my goals was to make sure some of the outlying areas were no longer forgotten, or didn't feel like they were forgotten. Plain City was one area that I felt like, okay, yeah, we split with Madison County. Okay, anybody knows, if you have two counties on your border, you should have your hands in both cars, because that's just how things get done. If one says no, the other one can say yes, and then you can still. So basically, I'm here just to introduce myself. I want to make sure that you know the way in, if you see me around. This usually gives me away, I can't hide it, it doesn't change my shell. It's the Scottish, I can help. So, right now, I've been working a lot with Denton, and I've worked with them about farmers markets, and I know that's creating some changes, some upgrades, staff goes perks with. We are contracting with you guys, I guess with everyone that's still waving those hands that are doing it, to help make these things possible and available for the citizens of Plain City. To say I'm excited is like the understatement of the year, because I know this is a great, you know, historically farming community, and we can bring those farmers into the fold, make sure that the people are getting the food that they need and the support that they need. So, so excited to see this just lift. As far as active living, we've been working through some grant writing and things like that. I know Pat Lobo funds a kind of fund in the area. The Heritage Trail is like the big coin phrase that everyone, if we want to see it come through Plain City, we want to see it continue into the northern part of Union County. So collaboration and networking, I just want to make sure that I'm here when you guys need me. I have cards I can hand out. If you have any questions, if you need anything, please reach out. It doesn't even have to be Parks and Trails related. If you ask me a question, I will find an answer, even if it's not my expertise, and I'll look back to you. I just want to make sure you have someone that you know you can go to and count out at all times. Any questions?
Thank you so much for coming out this evening, and we appreciate.
I haven't met everyone, but I will.
And we appreciate your work with helping with the farmer's market and to make that more of a reachable resource for our residents, so thank you. All right, going into the reports section. The last couple weeks with Mr. Sins' help, I recorded reading a book for Read Around the School Day for Plain City Elementary. It's coming up at some point here early May, so I really appreciate his efforts of helping me to look a little bit more professional for the students. As I read, Should I Share My Ice Cream by Mo Willems? So I'm excited to hear the feedback from the kids on that event. I also attended the Jonathan Alder High School Freshman Projects. They presented last week to area business leaders and other, I don't know, Ms. Ferguson, did you join in on that this year? Or, I saw Linda there, okay. They had stuff, they, last year was a select couple classes that did the freshman projects, and this year it, the entire freshman class at Jonathan Alder. They had to identify a problem in anything. It could be from like additional lights on the softball field so they could play at night, to water pressure at the high school, to my favorite, adding agriculture education classes in a curriculum, so it's very neat to hear that and interact with the students. That's pretty much the last couple weeks, so, and, oh, I want to thank our Public Works Department for getting out there and helping to clean up the, for the storm. I hope I'm not stealing anything from you, Ms. Leptin, but I know that we had several trees down in the village, as we talk about tree commission and adding trees. Unfortunately, with that very abrupt hailstorm, we had several to come down unfortunately, although one on my street was a Bradford pear, so I don't think there's any love lost for there, but it was a beautiful tree. So with that, just want to thank staff for all their hard work with that. Finance Director, Ms. Sonnet.
I've been at work today, but I've been in June, so we need to be geared up, so we're on the premises. We may be getting, we definitely need to be prepared, so you know.
Thank you. Chief McKee.
I also have a follow-up, thanks, Mayor. This year's baseball parade will be, will be made this, twenty twenty-three, starting at nine thirty A M. The news started, um, due to some game conflicts, it usually starts at ten. For the last, how many years, it's always been ten o'clock, this year's at nine thirty. And also due to the size of the parade now, it changed the route, they're actually going to leave into the park entrance, the north entrance, and just using the, the Fourth of July parade route, is what I always call it, it's the same route as that one. And then lastly, the Jonathan Alder High School Senior Parade will be made the eleventh at six o'clock. You all remember, the, this is due back when COVID hit, the seniors got graduated, the aftergraduates, and they did a parade, well, since then, they've always wanted one every year, since it's been a big help. So, we continue to do it, that's why I have a different one, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief McKee. Village Administrator, Ms. Leptin.
Thank you, Mayor. The streetscape of town is moving along, I want to extend my thanks to the, everyone for their patience, but especially the business owners that are impacted by either the construction equipment parking for their business or have their sidewalks torn up. This Saturday's Community Yard Sale, we've extended the deadline to get your address on the map until tomorrow afternoon, if you're interested, you can email us, and we'll figure out some of the map that we'll publish to the whole community. Last week, we had our pre-bid conference for the wastewater treatment plant. I'm hoping for some competitive bids in a couple weeks when that closes.
Thank you, Ms. Leptin. Council President, Mr. Sins.
Thank you, Mayor. We have our work session planning meeting coming up this Thursday. Mostly, that's information for the folks at this table, so this, it's not a meeting open to the public, but we just, really just set the agenda for the work session meetings. Coffee with council and friends is the version two dot O of the Coffee with Council. We met at the Pleasant Valley Fire District, and just a huge thank you to them for hosting this first event. We talked about speed bumps, one in particular, pools, parks, zoning. We laughed a lot. One of our residents who joined us had never been to the fire station before, and firefighter rings, I think it's Billy Rings, offered to give this resident a tour, and needless to say, our residents had some questions that I wasn't qualified to answer, so I'll be working with Ms. Leptin to get some answers to those questions. Our second event is on Saturday, this coming Saturday, four twenty-nine at nine A M. at the Historical Society. And whenever I go to the Historical Society on Saturdays, I usually get over there like around eleven o'clock, or twelve o'clock on a Saturday, and they're always, the ladies and people are back there in the back table, sitting around a table and eating, and going through photos and cataloging, and I sit down at the table to get some photos, to get some pictures or video of photos there, and I just joined their conversation, and we always laugh a lot. We tell, they tell stories, we share stories, and there's some, this last Saturday, I stopped over just to make sure that we were on for this Saturday, I was there for almost an hour and a half, and we just laughed a lot, belly laughing. So if you like stories and laughter, then I encourage you to come this Saturday at nine A M. over to the Plain City Historical Society for Coffee with Council and Friends, or as I'm just starting to call it, Coffee Council Friends, or CCF, because I'm lazy when I type. All right, I also attended the Union County Chamber of Commerce meeting, and one particular thing that, of interest to me that stood out in that meeting is that they are looking to put a subcommittee together to focus, to put some focus on how they can communicate better, to kind of get over the noise of the FUD that comes out in social media, right? And so how do they communicate better and get the message, the right, and the real information out to, to Union County? And then, that's it, it's all I have for the report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sins. Law Director, Mr. Lafayette.
No report, thank you.
Marketing and Communications.
Our April meeting was canceled, and we're going to have our May meeting over at the Public Library on May sixteenth.
Thank you. Mr. Sins, B Z A.
No meeting this month.
Yeah, Planning and Zoning, we had our meeting last week, as you will see on the agenda this evening, that we heard the final development plan for Madison Meadows Two, Sections one through four, and then Darby Station, Section three, parts one through three. Basically, that we have, it's pretty standard when it gets to the final phases and everything to come to council, so everything was very consistent with what we saw in, in early stages of the planning and zoning. So that was our recommendation, as well as a rezoning of three fifty-four North Chillicothe Street, basically to get it into compliance from, it's Zone B one currently, but going to a B two district, which is consistent with across the street of the business that would kind of be cornered from it. So pretty standard. We are having a work session on May first, I believe, around two o'clock here in Council Chambers to go over the zoning code and continue on getting that whittled down. Parks and Rec, Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. We have our next meeting on second week, second Tuesday of May, which I believe is May the ninth. So we're looking forward to all of these Parks and Rec meetings, they're a lot of fun. The only other thing is our Music in the Park schedule has gotten finalized, more or less. It's about eighty percent to ninety percent finalized. You'll find some groups mixed into the events calendar that's on the website. Just to mention a few of the entertainment opportunities that you might have for this year, we have, Elvis will be in the building this summer. So if you've never seen him before, you should probably make a trip out to. This will be in Pleasant Valley Gardens because of the competing steam threshers is in Pastime Park. In addition to that, we have the Dublin Wind Symphony coming at the end of July. They're, they're an eighty to a hundred piece wind symphony group, who's just literally outstanding, a lot of professional musicians in it, a lot of amateurs, a lot of former Buckeyes marching band people in it, and they are very, very good, so you don't want to miss that. In addition to that, we have Dixieland, we have easy listening music with just some, 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 some duos singing stuff, you just, it's really easy to listen to, as they say. And then we have some, to jazz it up a little bit, we have some mid, a couple of mid-century jazz groups that will be performing during the summer, so take a look at the schedule. If you can have nothing to do on a Sunday evening at seven P M., then come out and visit us. We'd be glad to see you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Personnel and Finance, Mr. Terry.
Yeah, so we had our meeting last week where we finalized the updated evaluation process in form. We passed that along to Mr. Sins, that we'll be using starting in June. And our next meeting is on May seventeenth, I believe, so.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Fire.
We have our next meeting Thursday, May fourth, at six thirty at the fire station.
Thank you, Mr. Rocker. Design Review Board.
We had a meeting earlier this month, because we got delayed because of the, in the previous month, and we've got another one this Wednesday on the twenty-sixth with multiple applications that will be aggressive.
Thank you, Mr. Daly. Economic Development is not on here, Mr. Dreyer. Oh, I'm so sorry, on the next page, I'm like looking. My apologies. Ms. Ferguson.
We are looking forward to our first meeting, it'll be tomorrow morning at a lot.
And we have a range of emotions, of motions here to pass, so the first one will be concerning the tree commission. Is there a motion to approve appointing Christie Seifer to serve on the tree commission?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Daly.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Rocker.
Yes.
And a motion appointing, to approve appointing Garrett Price to serve on the tree commission.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Daly.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Rocker.
Yes.
And a motion appointing Mary McGrath to serve on the tree commission.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Daly.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Rocker.
Yes.
And a motion appointing Polly Soon to serve on the tree commission.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Daly.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Rocker.
Yes.
And a motion to appoint Mr. Tim. I'm going to, are you in the audience here, is he here this evening? Okay, and Parks and.
I would pronounce probably McClaswick.
McClaswick, to serve on the tree commission.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Daly.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Rocker.
Yes.
Thank you, and for those in attendance that are serving on the tree commission, would you, would anybody like to stand up and introduce themselves?
Just a short ten-minute speech, that's.
I'm Polly Soon, I'm also with the Parks and Rec Commission. I love trees. Hopefully, I can bring something to it, and I'll learn a lot from it.
Thank you, Polly.
I'm Garrett Price, I have a more of a turf grass background, but I know a decent amount of trees. Work for Easton as an irrigation supervisor.
Thank you.
I'm Christie, thank you for appointing me to the, to the commission, so we're a lot with the vice presidential party and the, of the part, so happy to be on.
Thank you for attending this evening, and thank you for serving on the tree commission. Next, a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation, recommendation to approve P Z dash fourteen final plat for Madison Meadows Two, Section one through four.
I have a quick question on that.
Yes.
In the plans, it states that there, you can have the side yard offset at three feet, but in the plan specifications, it says two feet. I just want to make sure which we're clarifying, is it a three foot, they're allowed to? So if the side yard's ten feet, you can include three feet and three feet, if there's chimneys and that, but in the specs, it says two, but in the plan, it says three, I just want to make sure which one we're allowing. I know it's only one foot, but it, they should at least match. Does anyone know what we're?
So, on which two documents are these?
So on the, on the plan specifications or on the guide, on the standards, the paper documents on pages, A two and B two, it states there that the side yard offsets can be maximum two foot into the side yards, but on the plans, on the plats that we were, that we were given, it states in their plans on sheets, there's four different sheets, for each section, it states three feet.
So I, I may be incorrect on my last, Mr. Lafayette clarified, but we're accepting the final plat, so I would think that the plat would supersede the specifics, like the outline of the plan? So maybe Ms. Daly could explain, Mr. Lafayette, again, real quick, but there's a, it's inconsistency between two documents, one being more of an overview, one being the final plat. I would think that the final plat, which what we're actually accepting, would supersede any sort of narrative that goes with the final plat, but I may be wrong.
Yeah, the final plat is what we're, what the approval is based on, and that's what ultimately is going to be recorded. That's fine, nice one.
No, 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 thank you for that, I, I, I just, I think that's how it would always work, so.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Yep.
Motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation to approve P Z fourteen final plat for Madison Meadows Two, Sections one through four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Daly.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Rocker.
Yes.
Is there a motion accepting the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation to approve P U D dash twenty-three dash four final development plan for Madison Meadows Two, Section one through four?
So, Ms. Daly, is this where the, it's the other one?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is, so does it make sense for us to motion this with, like, with the understanding that we will harmonize?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that they blend it one way or the other, because I can see someone coming in and interpreting it differently, I just want to make sure that we have clarification of what we're doing. So what's the status of the overview you're talking about?
That's the, the final development plan.
Document, it, does it have any official status at all? I mean, that, that's an administrative update to a document, it sounds like.
Yes.
We should be able to pass it with amendments, with, or with consistent information to match the plat.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think about how it actually says, so. Motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation to approve P U D twenty-three four final development plan for Madison Meadows Two, Sections one through four, consistent with the final plat for Madison Meadows Two, Sections one through four, slight change.
Second.
We'll find out tomorrow if we mess that up.
You don't have to repeat it.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Daly.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Rocker.
Yes.
Motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation to approve P Z dash fifteen final plat for Darby Station, Section three, parts one through three.
Motion, motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation to approve P Z dash fifteen final plat for Darby Station, Section three, part one through three.
Second. Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Daly.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Rocker.
Yes.
And is there a motion accepting the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation to approve P U D dash twenty-three dash five final development plan for Darby Station, Section three, parts one through three?
Motion to accept Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to approve P U D dash twenty-three dash five final development plan for Darby Station, Section three, part one through three.
Second. Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Daly.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Rocker.
Yes.
And is there a motion to set the public hearing for rezoning of three fifty-four North Chillicothe Street and three sixty North Chillicothe Street, P Z dash twenty-three dash two, from Neighborhood Business District B one to Community Business District B two for June twelfth, two thousand twenty-three?
I have a question here, so I know that I will not be at this meeting, and, Mr. Sins, I don't think you could be at this meeting, so are we sure June twelfth is when we want to have this?
Is this a result of?
This is a public hearing.
In the committee?
So the Planning and Zoning recommended approving it, but it's zoning change, so we had to have a public hearing, and then we'll accept it. I'm just wondering out loud if we'll have that meeting on June twelfth, or if it'll get moved.
I will, I will be here for.
Okay, then if I'm only, I'd say we have it, yeah.
Okay.
All right, I just knew that you were also in June.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to set the public?
Yeah, a motion to set the public hearing to the, for the rezoning of three fifty-four North Chillicothe Street and three sixty North Chillicothe Street, P Z dash twenty-three dash two, from Neighborhood Business District B one to Community Business District B two for June twelfth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Could I ask what this really accomplishes, and for what purpose?
It helped, oh, yes, it helped us to be in compliance with our zoning. It's been a gas station for well over fifty to sixty years, and so this will, changing it from B one, which has kind of been an island in our zoning right there, and not consistent with what is basically across the street from it, it'll bring everything into compliance, so.
Thank you, with that, excellent, appreciate it.
No problem.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
My apologies.
Nope, nope, go ahead.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Daly.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Rocker.
Yes.
All right, moving into old business, second reading ordinance six dash twenty-two-three, approving current replacement pages to the Plain City codified ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Motion to approve second reading ordinance zero-six dash twenty-two-three.
And are you adding it as declaring an emergency?
Oh, yes, and declaring as an emergency.
Second.
Indeed.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Ms. Daly.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Rocker.
Yes.
Second reading Resolution eleven dash twenty-two-three, authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded in twenty-two-three.
Motion to approve second reading Resolution eleven dash twenty-two-three.
Second.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Daly.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Moving into new business, first reading, Resolution 12-2023, accepting public improvements constructed for Madison Meadows, Section 1. First reading, Resolution 13-2023, accepting public improvements constructed for Darby Station, Section 1, Parts 1 through 4. First reading, Resolution 14-2023, accepting the roundabout public improvement constructed for Darby Station. First reading, Resolution 15-2023, authorizing the sale of impounded vehicles. First reading, Resolution 16-2023, authorizing the village administrator to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Madison County Land Utilization Corporation. And Mr. Stanford, if you'd like to give an update on this?
Thank you, and good evening. I'm happy to present this opportunity to engage Madison County for a new economic and community development tool known as the County Land Bank. Just to give you a brief overview, the land bank is essentially a government agency that can acquire, hold, and manage distressed vacant foreclosed properties, with the ultimate goal of returning them back to some kind of proper use, okay? The Ohio Revised Code sets out, you know, how land banks function, how they're created, and they were enacted in 2009, so they've been around quite a while now in the state of Ohio. Madison County has initiated a process to create the County Land Bank, and they've invited the various communities in Madison County to engage with them, to partner, so we would all have the ability to access the land bank. Why this is important to Plain City is because first, it'll help us potentially address need light or vacant properties that we have in the community, granted we don't have a lot of vacant properties, although we do have a few, and this would help potentially identify and pursue those properties for some type of investment in the future in the community. Of course, this would lead to increased property values and investment in the community. And then, you know, basically, as we're looking at further improving our existing neighborhoods versus continually focusing on the new neighborhoods, this is important to shore up the downtown and the older part of Plain City. There's several examples of how municipalities like ours can partner with county land banks. I won't go to all of them, but probably one of the most common ones is basically communities can help, or can acquire vacant lots for those properties, and then use them for parks or recreational opportunities, green space, things like that, or for an economic development case, work directly with private developers to instigate some kind of redevelopment, whether it's housing on that lot, or partial community facilities, things like that. There's a lot of ways that communities work with land banks. In Ohio, land banks are, they're really flexible in how they can acquire property. Typically, probably the most popular way is through tax foreclosure, since it is a county organization, they work directly with the county auditor and the county treasurer to identify foreclosed properties or tax剥离 of properties, and then secure them and turn them over to municipalities. But they can also accept donations of properties. If, if somebody is, is way behind on their taxes, or there's a lot of code enforcement issues, personally technically delete the property to the land bank. And then, of course, you know, direct purchase of property, share of sale, side yard programs, things like that. A really cool thing about the, the land bank and how it would really impact us is the acquisition of properties and the timeline that it would take, whereas in municipality such as us, we have to go through a lot to acquire foreclosed property or vacant property, it takes several years. But the land bank is created to streamline those out there, so there's special ways that they can just come through and work directly with the county to secure these properties. One thing I did want to touch on too, is, you know, you may be asking, what's the difference between the land bank and the CIC? Actually, there are thousands, because in the same section of the Ohio Revised Code, there's land banks and CICs. But the primary difference with the land bank and the CIC is that land banks are focused primarily, or solely actually, on acquiring and managing properties, and then getting rid of them for some kind of investment, whereas the CIC basically picks the ball up from there and makes the development happen. So that's the different things between the CIC and the land bank. You know, obviously, there's a lot of opportunity for CICs and land banks to work together, you know, we see that in a lot of communities. Land bank can transfer properties to a CIC, and the CIC can work to identify development opportunities out there. So as the village goes down the, the line of creating its own CIC, we can still partner, obviously, with the land bank. Land banks are managed through the county. This is set up by Ohio law, so they must be established by county, and its board director is actually set by law, and they are appointed by the county commissioners. Right now, in Madison County, we have Commissioner Forrest, Commissioner, I can never, Samikas, okay, good, I can get points there. Madison County Treasurer, City of London, Representative in Osterland, Plain City, and then Nate Cal as the side representative, and we also have an attorney who serves, who has a really good local connection, you know, keeping everything local, at least in Madison County, and trying to partner with them. The memorandum of, of understanding that, that you have today, basically creates the partnership, or potentially create a partnership with Madison County Land Bank, but what's really cool too is that it really sets the policies, procedures, and protocols of how we would potentially handle land bank opportunities, specifically on how we would acquire properties, demolition, because sometimes you do need to demolish vacant homes, and then maintain properties, so we obviously would have these properties followed to our code compliance, so trimming weeds, things like that. Rehabilitation, if a property is able to rehab and then sold off for better use, and then also the disposition of property, so it works out in arrangement with the village and the land bank, which is really unique in this situation. So yeah, this is something I think is a great opportunity for Plain City to get involved with, especially as we're looking to build our tool chest for economic development tools and community development. So, I know I went through this kind of quick, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
I have a couple of questions, Jason. You anticipated one of them with your discussion about the CIC. I was particularly interested in, well, okay, here's, the process, as I understand it, is the, the, this land bank can take the properties if they want them, and they have exclusive right to do this unless the village applies within, like, 10 days or 30 days to exclude it from, from that process. I, I don't know what's common kinds of transactions in this world of, of doing this kind of thing, but then, if the CIC wanted that, does it ever get to the point where one party wants the property, the other party wants the property, and there's tension there with that, or does that get, does, does that happen, or is it like totally cooperative?
That is a great question. I have not heard that happening in other communities, to be honest. Typically, the, the community and the CIC would work hand in hand and never already be a, perhaps even a agreement set up beforehand.
Right.
That's something I, I would hope to accomplish with Madison County, so make sure with the land bank and then also the future CIC in Plain City.
Okay, because I could see a CIC being formed here in the not-too-distant future, and being interested in real estate development, or in ensuring that properties were developed to the standards that we wanted them developed, so could we, I mean, the, the village, I know, has the right to, to take that away from them with a certain amount of time. Is the CIC, like, an agent of the village, would have the same right, or could the village take it away and give it to the, to the CIC in that case?
I, I have to answer that.
Okay.
I would research that.
Yeah, because the CIC would be, in that case, I think, would naturally become the agent of the village in implementing a kind of real estate development policy, so if you could find out, that would be useful.
Yeah, typically, in, in that case, when we do go down the road of establishing a CIC, the village council would actually create a separate agreement with the CIC, and that would be potentially something we could outline in that agreement. So we would have to have the service agreement in place with the CIC.
Okay, it sounds all very positive to me, is the, is, so that, so the, this land bank is a governmental or quasi-governmental commission or agency, so how are they funded?
Typically, they, it depends. It's, it's basically set up the same as the CIC as far as what they can do with revenues. They can't levy taxes or anything, but they would receive support from Madison County, you know, ultimately, that is the managing group for, for the land bank. But they would also potentially be able to receive benefits of revenues from when properties are dispersed to outsiders, so they would still pay a fee back to the land bank to access property.
Okay, so they have their own fiscal officer then, who's responsible for their stuff, and so, yeah, the, that's funding thing, they would get money from the county then? You think borrow the money from the county, or be granted it, or how would that work?
I am not sure. I've not seen an agreement with Madison County and the land bank. I, I know there is, I believe, an agreement for services, but I can't, I can't get it.
Yeah, that's all interesting, you know, beneath the radar, kind of details that kind of, you know, gets in the weeds, but thank you, if you can just chase down some simple answers with that, I appreciate it. That's all I have, Jason, thank you, and I'm very positive about this land thing.
So, taking it back, you know, those are very good questions. So, does the land bank already exist today?
It is just created.
Just created?
Yes. We had our first meeting in February.
And when you went like this, that means you are represented on the land bank, and it's, it had, so it doesn't currently have any property?
As far as I know, correct, they do not have any property that has been transferred over to the land bank.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Stanford? Thank you. With that, we are completing our public portion of the meeting. We do have two executive sessions that we will be going into to discuss on, so, and we will not be coming back with any, any results or any further business, so.
We won't appoint anybody.
No. We're not appointing.
We won't be appointing, we won't be making the phone with Kevin Halloway, sorry.
No, no.
And I know there was one visitor that was here for an agenda, I don't, you're good? Perfect.
He's from Planning and Zoning, so.
I didn't want to skip you over, yeah.
I just didn't know he'd signed it for, for the visitor portion, so I, once he said that, I understood. So thank you all for coming to this meeting.